I think we're ready to call this meeting to order. It is 6:30 on November 21st and we are meeting in the Dover Sherburne Middle School Library. Before I read the preamble, are there any community comments? No one's there, no one's here. Okay, so we're just going to get started. And the first thing on our agenda is the superintendent's comments. Is Beth doing that or are you?
Beth is doing it.
Okay.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. First of all, thank you for your being here tonight and zooming in from home. I figured I'd try the technology on the other side just to make sure it works. And many thanks to Denny and Dawn and Kate for holding down the fort in central office this week. I know it's a lot on Denny tonight to be juggling the technology. And Dawn, I know tonight's your big night, so I'm excited to be here to support you.
Thank you.
So Denny's going to project my slides and we'll make sure that you get a copy of these in the updated packet. Denny, let me know when you're ready.
Yep, all set.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to give you some updates on my goals as superintendent this year. My first goal focuses on a vision for teaching and learning. And certainly I'm doing all of this work in partnership with Denny and our building leaders. So as you know, we have identified nine best practices across the district, K to 12, and they're identified in this beautiful infographic that Denny created. And we are using these for a number of reasons and a number of ways this year. Our educators have created goals around these best practices and expanding their toolbox to implement these best practices in their classrooms. The leaders have identified goals and how to support educators in acquiring these best practices, implementing these best practices, perfecting them. And so as a leadership team, we continue to bring our ideas back to the leadership table and calibrate what we're seeing during observations and how we give feedback to educators in order to promote their professional growth and learning. Our building leaders are also using their monthly faculty meetings to highlight these best practices, having educators share what they're doing in the classroom. They can learn from the experts in the very classroom next door as to how they're supporting students to own their learning and putting students at the center of their learning each and every day. And I'm sure you'll be hearing from Denny after next week's Professional Development Day. As a reminder, we don't have school on Monday. Our educators will be engaging in professional development right after Thanksgiving. And we have a keynote speaker from A.J. Giuliani, who we leaned on very heavily during pandemics when we were reinventing teaching and learning. So we're excited to be hosting him. He'll be talking to our educators about how to put students at the center of their learning, especially in an age where they're distracted by technology. And we now have the challenges of artificial intelligence. And then Denny has created workshops with the help of many experts, both in person and on Zoom around all of these best practices. So again, opportunities for educators to fill their toolboxes so we can see these best practices happening more often across more classrooms. Next slide?
Yep.
All right. My second goal is around showing progress and holding ourselves accountable to our strategic goals. So thanks again to Denny. We've been working with open architects to create a data dashboard. It already has been created and is an opportunity for our leaders to be looking at our M-CAS scores. But we're hoping to also include additional standardized assessments and information, including both AP information, SAT information, but also information from the benchmarks that we use throughout the year, especially at the primary level around math and literacy, so that we can track our students' growth and provide interventions to make sure that they're continuing to make progress towards benchmarks. We'll be able to see attendance and discipline information throughout the year. And then as we conduct surveys with our students on a more qualitative level around social emotional wellness, student health and wellbeing, around sleep, student engagement, homework, we'll be able to look at this information too. So with all of the goals that we talked about last year through DEI, making sure that we're looking at the success of all of our students across academic, social, emotional, behavioral realms, we'll be able to track and monitor progress through this dashboard. So we're very excited about that. The third goal is around transparent communication. So I'm sure last month you saw my superintendent's newsletter come out. This will continue to come out hopefully on a bi-monthly period. I've held three of four office hours for parents and community members to drop in, bring ideas, ask questions, and just engage in conversation. They've been held in the mornings, in the evenings, on various days of the week, hopefully to provide all people, regardless of their schedules, an opportunity to check in. So far, I've been able to attend three of the four schools' PTO meetings just to give an update on the district strategy and our goals and what's happening in the district. Again, taking questions and feedback. I'll be going to the last PTO meeting at Chicaring in December. I met with the Sherburne Council on Aging last month, and I'm meeting with the Dover Council on Aging in January, again, to provide information on all the wonderful things that are happening in our schools, answer questions, engage in conversations, so that all of our taxpayers and stakeholders have an idea of what's happening in the schools. In the lines of communication, I attended the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Conference last week. It was held in coordination with MASC. And I went specifically to attend two workshops from a communications specialist, Chris Horan, who I worked with in Boston. The first one was on how to address and communicate about polarizing issues within a school district. I will say that much of the advice he provided in terms of how to navigate polarizing issues, we follow last year. So we will continue to do our best to bring our community together around difficult topics and find common ground in how to support our kids. The second workshop I attended was around how to keep the district strategy at the forefront of all that we do. So I have lots of ideas on how to continue to keep our goals and progress on our goals at the center of our website, in the center of our school committee meetings and my newsletters, so that everybody knows what it is that we're working on and how we're making progress. We're hoping to bring Chris to the district in January to meet with a larger leadership team about how better to communicate at the school level. Our principals spend a lot of time trying to communicate information out to their parents. But we want to make sure that we are using our time and energy and resources effectively so that the information that our parents and caregivers are getting is bite-sized enough and informative enough about the topics that they want to hear to make sure that everybody knows what it is that we're working on at the school level and how we're supporting their kids. Lastly, on this topic, I've applied to be part of the LEAD Now cohort. LEAD Now is the organization that is bringing together superintendents from across the country to learn how to be proactive with communication, reactive with communication, and problem solve around issues with communication they're having in their districts. So I've applied to be the next cohort. I will know in January whether or not I've been chosen. And I'm hopeful for the opportunity to collaborate, not only with superintendents from Massachusetts, but across the nation as we all face similar problems. MEKO 2.0. So Denny and I had the opportunity to attend the MEKO Leadership Retreat, excuse me, a few weeks ago with all of the MEKO leaders from our area. It was held at Gillette Stadium. And it was an opportunity for us all to come together after a lot of work that's been done by the MEKO headquarters around reminding districts and re-engaging districts in what it means to be a MEKO community and our commitment to all students in terms of developing an inclusive and equitable school environment for all of our students to attend. I'd love to share with you this quick video that was developed by MEKO just as a reminder of our commitment as a community to our Boston students, Boston families, and what it means moving forward in terms of our work. So, Denny?
Racism has been very bold in recent years. People are losing their lives. Walls are being built. Children are being separated from their parents. But the MEKO can be bolder and stand up for racial justice. After George Floyd was killed, we developed an anti-racism roadmap. We're embarking on a journey toward a vision we call MEKO 2.0, where every student in a MEKO district receives an inclusive, equitable, and anti-racist education. Every student. MEKO 2.0 means changing, improving, enhancing the work that we do each day in our schools. Let's ask ourselves, how can we do better? By breaking down racial barriers and stereotypes, by diversifying our teachers, by creating an inclusive and representative curriculum, by building interracial friendships, by implementing restorative justice practices, and by preparing students for a diverse workforce. We cannot end racism, but we can make the experiences of all students better by implementing small and large changes. Our founder, Ruth Bassin, said, "Business as usual as a way of life must be totally discredited." We have to continue to evolve as individuals, as a community, as a school system, and as a world. MEKO is not a Boston program. This is just our mode of transportation. MEKO mobilizes people, people's hearts and people's minds. Being a MEKO community carries a lot of responsibility. We are the largest voluntary school integration program in the United States. People see us as a model for school integration. You are participating in something special and unique. As long as the community begins to see it that way, then every decision that you make will benefit everyone in the community. MEKO was grassroots then and it's grassroots now. What is your role in this next chapter of MEKO 2.0? Remain inspired to do this work. Be intentional about your approaches and insist that change can happen.
All right, it's all set, Beth.
Okay, thank you. So that's a good note now that I'm experimenting on the other side of the screen. People on the screen can't hear the video when you're playing it. So just a note for people watching from home. So lastly, I just want to mention an update about the Calendar Task Course. Goli is your official representative on the Calendar Task Course. Goli, I'm not sure if you want to provide the update or I'm happy to.
Sorry. Sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't prepare anything, but I can, if you want to give an update, I can also add anything needed.
Okay, thank you. So as you know, the Calendar Task Course has been meeting since the spring. It includes students, faculty members, parents, community members, and school committee members. And you tasked us with the job of looking at our school calendar with an attempt to be more inclusive of the many observances and celebrations that our community engages with throughout the year. We've done a lot of work, including sending out surveys to students, staff, and families. And I think I mentioned we had over 700 responses, which was a lot of information to synthesize and analyze. We've also done a lot of research in terms of what local comparable districts are doing, including those that we compete with in the sports arena, because certainly schedules need to align there. We had our last meeting a few weeks ago and we gave some really deep conversation about wanting to reach back out to the stakeholders one more time to collect additional, more detailed information as we move forward. In doing that, and as we started to think about the questions that we were going to craft around whether or not we should revert to a calendar that only recognizes holidays mandated by the government, or whether or not perhaps we should consider the holidays that we've included in the calendar that aren't required, maybe some of them be taken off and replaced with others. We realized that given what's happening in the world right now, that this is a very difficult conversation to be having around holidays and who to celebrate and who should have time on the calendar. And so we have asked, Goli being your representative, to come back to each of the three school committees and just ask if we can put this committee on pause, at least for the short term, until we get through the holidays and perhaps catch our breath and can go back up to the balcony and think about the task it is that you gave us and how best to move forward, given the raw emotions and feelings of everything happening and how we can use this as an opportunity to bring our community together as opposed to causing additional strife and division. Goli, I'm not sure if I missed anything.
No, thank you so much for the detailed updates. As Beth mentioned, we had a lot of deep conversations. We looked at the surveys. And in our last meeting, we were not sure if it's a good time at this, right now, to ask, to send out another survey asking if families are... One of the options is having the mandatory, just mandated holidays as our school holidays. And we thought it's not a good time to ask this question from our families.
Thank you, Goli. So sure. We or I am happy to take any questions about the Goals Update or MEKO 2.0 or about the Calendar Task Course at this time.
Any questions? I don't think there are any questions, Beth. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. You know where to find Goli and me if you have any questions or follow-up.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions about the Calendar Task Course.
Perfect, thank you both. Dawn, I'm going to hand it over to you to present the warrant report and the fiscal year '24 monthly report.
Great, thank you. In your packet is your monthly, routine monthly warrant reports. Again, I thank Liz for stopping by town hall and signing those on behalf of the school committee. And again, if there's any ever desire to look at the detail in these particular warrants, we definitely keep copies at central office. So always feel free if you want to just explore a little further what makes up sort of your operating expenses. That does come in handy, you know, as we start talking about the budget to sort of see the ins and outs. So I'll just add that little comment. On the monthly report, which I think is going to be another good tool for you for looking at your budget, is that you can see where we are coming in towards budget through November 16th. That is actually a date where we had just posted a warrant and just posted payroll. So I wanted to make sure you had the most up-to-date information that we could provide. As I have done in the past on your business report, anything that is new information will be involved. Other than that, I carry the narrative forward because a lot doesn't change. And it's always there as a good reference tool for you from month to month. So really, the only new thing I have to share on both salaries, expenditures, and out-of-district, which is a good note, since our last meeting, is that as they've settled into school and they've looked at the needs of the students, we did increase your OT, FTE, needs at Chicaring by .2. How we were able to do that is that we do have district-wide shared staff members, which allows us to sort of have them on staff. And then when school starts and we see what the caseload is, we can allocate them based on where the need is. So this is an existing person who's in the system whose caseload just got switched a little bit based on the schools. And so you picked up an additional .2 that is reflected in your financial statements. Really, other than that, it was only a month in between. And a lot of things are just operating as we thought they were. So that's actually positive. Also, you have in this month's report your quarterly statement for your special revenue and revolving funds. So this can just shows you sort of the roll forward of those funds from July 1st through September 30th. And a couple of these will come up. You'll note that I pointed out that we added the second preschool this year and that it was being covered by the revolving fund. This allows you to sort of see how the finances are working at that. So what is in compared actually are the full year. It's what's been expensed so far for payroll and what's expected to be incurred through the end of the school year. So they can see we're really going to be pulling from the fund just under $125,000 for the year. So we had the funds to do that and that's how we'll operate the second classroom that we have at Chicaring. Any questions on that? Probably not, pretty straightforward. Again, I think when you start spending more time with your budget book, it's actually good also then to look at where we stand. Because you have your '23 actual in the budget book, then this will give you at least a peek into '24 as you look at what the budget is for '25.
Actually, Dawn, a quick question on the unexpected additional out-of-district placements. Were all those incoming like kindergartners? Or are those were people in the school district that ended up moving out of the school district? Like there were six more than...
Yeah, no, it was majority were in district that just got placed out. Where I think there was, there was one, no, the move-in actually was reflected last year. So it was really just changes in student needs for between last school year and this school year.
Any other questions? Okay. We do not have any discussion items this meeting, but so we'll move on to the action items. So Dawn, if you would like to continue with the proposed fiscal year '25 budget.
Exactly. So hopefully you had some, an opportunity to spend some time with your budget book over the weekend or at least on Sunday, just to sort of step back a little bit and give you some insight as to the process that we follow for building a budget. We sort of kicked the process off in mid-October, third week of October. And at that point in time, it sits in the building hands. And so your building administration meets with their curriculum leaders, with other departments that are operating in the school. And they sort of say, okay, what do you need? How's your budget looking now? It's an opportunity for them to sort of reflect as well and bring forward any new requests or where they can see that we need, that something's not being used anymore and we can reduce the budget. With that, while they're doing that, in central office, we're actually building the budget on the payroll side. And I will tell you, we do it employee by employee. So payroll rolls into the budget based on where we are now, advances staff into the steps and lanes where there will be for fiscal year '25. And now that we have all the contracts, it's great because we know exactly where things are going. So this is the easier side of the budget to do because we don't have to wonder what the contracts are going to be. So just so you know, payroll then is built up employee by employee. And then we come together and have a meeting with everyone in central office and the building, Chicaring Building Administration, and discuss what they have come back from their buildings with. And we'll talk more high-level too about staffing needs, both at the special education level and the gen ed level, new initiatives that we may be contemplating so that we can pull all that information together and put our best sort of foot forward as to your first version. And we try to capture everything, even if we're contemplating it, because this is sort of the first budget that's going to go to the town and it's going to sort of earmark the funds that they sort of set aside for us. So you don't want to come in January and say, oh, well, we want to add the math program now or such. So we throw everything in this first version. And now we have until March to sort of have some of that sort of sift out. So that's sort of what we sort of do to sort of get to the point where you're getting your budget book. And then if you look at the components, we sort of give you an overview of the budget itself, a higher level statement where you can just sort of see the main categories. And at least that gives you sort of a high-level look at the budget and the categories without looking at all the details. It's very important that we share with you the town's budget guidelines. I also think as a citizen, it's great to read because it sort of gives you sort of the big picture look at what the town is dealing with right now, a couple of issues that they notify us about, and just sort of their approach to the budget. And I think it makes you realize that we are a big part of the budget and sort of our fiscal responsibility to understand what the town is dealing with on a bigger picture so that we're sort of a collaborative partner in that process. So I think that's great reading. And I will say that the recommendations that they sort of are giving all the departments are sort of the steps that we follow anyway. As you see, they say, look at your fiscal year '23 actual versus in your '24 budgets as you're contemplating your budget. That's exactly what we do. And we provide you with all that information so that you can do that as well. Dover is usually very generous in that they tell you to do level service. So no matter what it costs theoretically, they want us to provide the same level of service where another funding option could be level funded. So we're going to, you keep the same amount of money and you just figure out how you're going to make that work. So it is very advantageous on the Dover side that it's level service. But they also want you to be physically responsible. And so I do believe when you start looking at our budget, you'll see where we have made some cuts because we know we don't need the money. And then that helps where we do need to ask for more money. In addition, I think this is the one opportunity that you get to see like every line item in our budget and how it sort of rolls up to the bigger piece. And that is with your tab two. And then also to supplement tab two, you have your summary of staffing and then the summary of grants. We like to share the summary of grants because that is money that's outside of the operating budget. Should for any reason we lose any of those grants, you understand the financial ramification of what we might have to make up in the general fund. So it's good to just sort of have that. We're lucky in that the biggest piece that we rely on is the special ed grant of 240, where we do put four EAs. So if that grant ever went away, then that's, you know, staffing that we'd have to build into the general fund. So it's good to see that there is funds that we get from state and federal to supplement your budget and also understand if those happen to go away, sort of the financial implications of that. Again, I think one of the important pieces, and I'll go through, we'll talk about this, but I just want to sort of walk through what's in your budget book is the tab three is the enrollment, both a 10-year historic and the five-year projected. Again, we're built on, our budget's based on who is coming to us for our services. And the fourth tab is looking at out-of-district. Gives you a little bit more insight into that budget number. And your fifth tab is your capital budget, which you approved in October. So it's there for reference only right now until we make any further decisions on the flooring. This is what has been sent to capital. And at some point, Liz, they'll request us to have a meeting and we can go talk to the capital about our capital. So getting into sort of the, where we are with the fiscal year '25 budget, again, the assumptions are that we have level enrollment based on fiscal year '24. We obviously follow the compliance with the town budget guidance. We work towards, you know, to make sure that we're in line with the district's strategy because that's very important, right? The strategy is where we want to go. So we want to make sure that where we're putting our financial resources is going to get us there. We continue to sort of assess student needs in post-COVID, especially at the elementary level. And so we've taken considerations in there as far as educational support, additional curriculum supports that we need to do. And as I just mentioned, just keeping our eyes on the entitlement grants, just so that you're aware of that component of your budget. So overall, we're looking at an 8.83% increase, just a little under $1 million. And recall that we sort of look at our budget in two pieces. One is the operating budget of Chicaring itself. And the second component are students ages three through 22, who are Dover residents, who are educated outside the district. Because that's actually sort of beyond our control. And so we obviously look at two components. We've got the elementary component and then the out-of-district component. Just for Jesse and Martha, for the new members, the region here itself doesn't cover any out-of-district expenses in their budget. It sits at the two towns. So Sherburne covers all Sherburne residents at their elementary budget. And you cover all of Dover's. And that's in the regional agreement. And that way, you're actually sharing your, each town is responsible for the expenses of their residents versus coming to the region and sharing it based on enrollment.
And who makes the decisions about how the placements work?
The placement, so we have an out-of-district coordinator who reports to Kate McCarthy, who's the Director of Student Services. So there's a team. So if you're on an individual education plan, an IEP, it could be that that's the recommendation. You've been evaluated and we might not be able to accommodate your learning disabilities and that there's a place better suited for you to grow and learn. And so that's where, then they will go out and send packets to various private and public. Some public schools do have special education programs that accept students from other districts. And so then they are then placed. We are, because we're a small school district, a lot of times we have to place students out because we don't have a cohort of students in that programming that they need. And you want them to be with peers. And so that's what you'll see. A lot of times we, if you only have one or two students, then their best probably serves in a different learning environment. But then again, we're trying to invest more in our programming. As you know, we talked about a couple of Dover students who are attending the Goals Program at Pine Hill. So that's what added... So that's what added, that's sort of a in district program that Dover students are eligible to go to, which is great because it sort of keeps them in their home district.
Sure.
But gets them in a program with cohorts and with the staffing they need to, to be successful.
The cost per student is really high.
It varies, yeah. It can go anywhere from, let's say, I would say like 40 now is our least expensive and it could go all the way up to hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yes.
Because we also have residential students. So there'll be students who are in a program 365 days of the year. And those are anywhere from like three to 700,000. So part of that, and, and I'm happy to have like a finance 101 meeting with you is to talk about the circuit breaker reimbursement. So there is some state relief from those students who cost at that level. So anything that's over, say, $50,000, I think it's about the threshold right now. So we'll spend $50,000 if the placement is 100,000. 50,000 of that is eligible for reimbursement and we get 75% of that back. So when we talk about circuit breaker reimbursement, we're estimating that we're going to see like a million dollars. That's money coming back to us of tuitions that we paid in the previous year. So there is a mechanism to help districts with the, to sort of manage the finances of out of districts so it's not coming all on the taxpayers of the town. So as I said, we're looking at about just a little under a million and you're at a 5% increase for your in district. Just to give you sort of a comparison, that's almost exactly where we started last year for version 1.0. And then you can see we ended up at 4.63. Because again, we start at the high point and things that can happen hopefully will only benefit, benefit us coming, bringing that budget number down. The out of district, and as you know, we've been having a pretty large negative variance this year. So you would expect to see an increase in the budget for fiscal year 25 is about 20%. And that is up over just the 1%, almost under 2% that we had last year. You will see definitely wild swings in out of district due to new placements. We can have years where we have several students graduating or aging out. In 23, your out of district budget was down half a million. So it's not uncommon to sort of see some, some big swings both ways. It's just the nature of also the small number of students that we have in this population can make a swing. So looking at the in district operating budget, obviously we took a cut at just telling you a little bit about the key budget drivers. Obviously people, payroll is 87% of your budget. And so that's the easy piece right now to sort of, to sort of at least budget for a version 1.0. If you remember, you approved all the contracts last spring and you're looking at contractual increases and the majority of them at 3%. In addition, for your educators, there's the step increase, which can range anywhere from four to nine. So if you look at it this way, there are some staff members who could be beginning either like the 3% because they're on the top step or closer to like seven to 12%. So I would say the majority, if you're in the matrix, are getting 7% increase. And there's a couple of little areas where it does spike. And Jeff Bean on negotiations, you're probably aware that there's just certain movements in the, the matrix that have a higher increase. But that's where you have to just keep that in mind. And the seniority of your staff has a big difference on what you're going to see in payroll increases. Coupled with that is when you add staff. So we are in this budget requesting a 0.5 FTE to make the math coach at both Pine Hill and Chicreen be a 1.0. And that is built into this budget. That's approximately $50,000 increase. And then you're also making up for all the post fiscal year 24 budgets. So if you go back to your monthly report, you'll see that we did some, some conversions of some positions from contracted services to FTEs. That's also in your staffing report, but those now have been worked into the salary side of things versus the operating, which is going to show, is going to give you a larger increase in salaries. In addition, any retirements that may come forward for next year, we reflect in version 2.0. We do have an early retirement incentive for the educators that they let us know by November 1st, they'd be eligible for $5,000 early retirement payment, but they have until February 1st to rescind that. So we don't make any of those impacts on the budget until after the February 1st date rolls around. So you'll see those in your March meeting. The other really, I think the biggest budget driver on the operating side is the proposed adoption of the new math curriculum. And so we're putting it in here now. As Denny's been telling you, it's sort of in the early stages. We're still running the second year of the pilot. But we took a, we did get estimates of what it would cost to take one of the pilots and implement at K5. And so Chicreen's piece of that is about 72,000. The way that I think a lot of the vendors are packaging things right now and math general law has allowed municipalities, school districts specifically to take advantages to do package prices. So that 72,000 actually represents five years worth of, so you're buying the curriculum, puts all the supplies for five years, but you have to purchase it in the first year. So you'll see that spike in the first year, but then you won't really have any math curriculum. You might have to supplement a little bit, but the majority of it you won't see in Ken. So it's, it's good and bad for municipalities because you hate to have that spike and then have four years with nothing and then have to have the spike again. But the spike the next time shouldn't be as great because we're just then going to be picking up the supplies, the workbooks. And that's what we do right now in everyday math. So we'll have a little bit of a break for four years and then pick it back up. It'll be picking up the supplies.
So that will have a further presentation just because.
Yes, yes.
That's still, that's good to budget for it now, but we don't know.
We don't know. And so in, I think in the, you know, in the memo, we sort of say there will be a full presentation on this. We're thinking in the January, February timeframe and we envision both LA, both Dover and Sherburne School Committees having it together.
That's great.
Since it'll be implemented together across the school, so.
To the 0.5 FTE coach, there's currently one, one, currently 0.5?
Yes.
Among both schools that are.
There's a 1.0 that's shared. And so each school's adding an additional 0.5. So each school would have a 1.0.
Specifically for the math curriculum?
Specifically for math.
Whatever, as an expert in the decided program.
Well, not, not necessarily, but it's someone who's already working. So we already have a math coach who's been working with the educators to coach in the class.
Got it.
Put together.
So not, not necessarily because of the curriculum classroom, it's just to have.
Well, I, I think it's going to definitely, when you implement a new, you're going to need extra support.
Yeah.
And I do think that even without that, they're seeing the need that it would be nice to have a 1.0. You have a 1.0 literacy coach. So that would equate ELA with math and probably give you a little bit more building support. It's great to have them work across the buildings. It's for that consistency. But I think at this point, especially with a new math curriculum, it makes sense to have a dedicated person in the building because there will be a lot of, of PD, a lot of questions about the new curriculum. So I think it's going to give you a better sort of starting point to make it be as strong as we can if you've got that person there to support it.
But if we decide that it's not this year for that program, that might be postponed as well.
Maybe, but as I said, I think that was something that was coming up and I think it only is, is more solidly supported with the math curriculum, but it's definitely something, a need they see now. So that piece could stay. But I think that's where the presentation will bring it all together hopefully for us. And then we'll see where we'll go. But that's, we made sure we put K through five full implementation in there so that we were only coming down and not have to worry about going up. Because it could be that, you know, they decide to do something K2, something different than that, but we wouldn't go for the whole, the whole shebang right now to at least have a placeholder in the budget. And then the majority of all of our other operating counts, luckily were at, remain at or below funding. You will definitely see a lot of red where we went and looked at the three-year actual, the three, last three-year actuals, looked at where we are in 24 right now. Some line items, we could pinpoint something we are no longer using. So if I did that, we made that comment. Specifically, we moved our IEP management system from an outside into Aspen, which is already our, our student information system anyway. So that annual fee could come out of all three schools. So wherever we can, we sort of, we do pull out those numbers that we know. We just don't leave that padded in your budget. And I think you can see that when the, the different line items where you do see reductions. If we have an increase for any particular reason, we try to give you a little more background as to why we're having an increase in that line item. Obviously enrollment, how many students we have dictates how many special, how many classroom sections we have, how many specialists we need. So that is definitely a key budget driver, which is why we give you the 10-year historical and then the five-year projections. So a little bit of background about the five-year projections, we use a formula where you look at in migration and out migration all as of October 1st. So we look at the October 1st of each of the years. You can see what the grade was the year before, what the grade became. You look at, take that percentage and that's looking at both students who came new to the school and the students who left. So it gives you a blended average and that's what the percentages are at the top. So if you see something over 100, that means from grade, from year to year, that grade grows. And if you see a number below 100, it can either be for that particular year or over the three-year period, that's a grade where we typically might see a decline. And so at least gives you sort of a forecast. The one number that is in there right now that sort of skews it a little bit is kindergarten. So we just use a three-year average, but we know that number can be something other than the three-year average. In the, somewhere in mid-December is when the school gets the, sort of the initial census from the town clerk's office. And so we'll have a better feel of what that number is. Like last year was in the 50s. So that's where doing a three-year average and putting 70 in there could be overstating it, but kindergarten is always one of those things that it's hard to sort of know exactly where it's going to be. You can have your census, but then you also know parents can hold kids back. There could be kids that we don't know about that are on the census, but we'll have a better feel of that too. Maybe in January, we should have an updated number for you for kindergarten. At the bottom, we sort of show you the sections using the three-year projection and where they would be class size wise. Your class size policy is 17 to 22. You'll see that there are some that are below that. However, we would never reduce an educator if we didn't think that long-term we could sustain that reduction. You don't want to reduce one year, add it back the next year. So we're very thoughtful when we either add or reduce a section. You can see there are some numbers there that are below 17. However, you only need one or two more students who sort of might show up in that class and you'll need that. And then you can see they're going to grow as they continue on. So we look pretty stable, I think, right now as far as 26 sections. So before I just jump into out of district, does anyone have any questions sort of about the in district? And again, you've got two more meetings and, or maybe three actually with the special meeting. And always feel free to, as you're looking at it and things pop in your head, send questions to Liz and she can send us, send them off to us and we can provide answers as well.
Why is there 1.9 FTE for principal and the principals?
Because the, our assistant principals don't work a full year.
Oh.
Yeah, they work something short, shorter of a, a 12-month position.
Okay.
So we sort of equate that. It's two people.
It's a funny.
But technically they're not, they're not a 260-day person. Yeah. Schools love FTEs. We've got all kinds of weird FTEs. I got 10.5.
I was looking at that. They're all a little, they're a little long. But the 1.9 stood out as the.
Yeah, the 1.9 and that's really is because we had made this a couple of years ago, but there's, there's very few schools that have both administrative, assistant principal and assistant principal work 12 months. And so we sort of moved their schedule back to something less than that a couple of years ago.
Okay.
So technically they don't work a full FTE. So there's, like I said, a lot of information to go through. You've got the line items. We try to give you some really good explanations off to the point, off to the side.
I would think that's why, one reason why your, your print shrunk a little bit because the explanations were so long and it still tries to keep it printed on the 11 by 17. So you might have to get your magnifying glass out, but I think that, you know, it's good to see the three years. So you've got your three years of actual, your current 24 budget. Keep in mind, you've got your monthly financial statement for 24 that you can refer back to and then our 25 proposed. And then you see the differences between your 24 budget and your 25 budget with the percentages and where something doesn't look like it's in a normal increase mode is where we try to give you an explanation of what's going on. And I think again, the biggest piece that we have here as far as an ask for the town is the math.
For the bus and contracts, I noticed that we're in the, is it a five-year contract or we're in the fifth year?
We'll be in the fifth year in fiscal year 25. So we'll go out to bid next year. And what we do is it's typically a three-year with a two-year extension.
With one two-year extension.
With one two-year extension, yeah. So it gets you to five. And it's those two, that's the two-year extension where they really sort of entice you in because we're seeing like a 1% increase. So I'll prepare you for fiscal year 26. You're probably going to see like 18 to 20% increase. Because we take a huge increase the first year of the contract. Second year it gets lower, third year it gets lower, fourth, fourth and fifth year are always like minimal increases because they're, you know, they want you to sort of like buy into.
Buy into their program for the following years.
So we're in that sort of, I love the fifth year. I just don't, I'm not going to like the first year or next year.
Right.
That's where it definitely, we see, we see the increase.
Maybe we can factor in extra services like bus tracking systems.
Yeah, so.
I've had, told Liz, I've had more people come to me this year complaining about their kids standing, what people who don't get picked up at their house, they're like down the end of the road for like a 15-minute time span of like when the bus is coming. And they're like, maybe I already missed it. I don't know. And I walk all the way back down the street to get driven to school.
Yeah, usually they're not, our bus drive, our bus routes are pretty because they're, they're not as spread out as some other districts. Because we have, you have 10 buses alone just in, in Dover. But yeah, that is something that you negotiate because it's an added cost to the contract. And every year I will tell you at least, I've been done that bus, been involved in the bus contracts twice. And we do talk about it. They'll give us pros and cons about it. It's, it seems like it's a good thing, but there's also some cons about it. So we do have this discussion and we'll definitely ask school committee for any other concerns they have about busing that we'll bring forward when we do the RFP next, like next late fall.
It's one of the odd hot topics that I've had.
Yeah, yeah. No, and it's, it's, you know, it has its cycle because we definitely talked to Connolly about it last go around. And at that point, they only had one school district that was doing it. And it becomes like another thing you have to manage. And that's where it's a little bit of a drawback on administration.
So communication's gotten better though. I think that there's more updates about buses that are late, or like, you know, late in their route this year than there has been in prior years.
Yes, but we get all those calls.
I've never gotten that.
Oh, me neither.
Yeah, well, you might have buses that aren't. We've had a couple, we've had lots of substitute buses this year. And if you throw a, a different substitute on a bus, we've been running into problems, both scattered buses in Dover and scattered buses in Sherburne. We'll usually get a call in the morning and we call the school and they can quickly send out emails. So we do try to keep everyone as up to date as we can on what's happening with the buses. But I want to tell you, I think we're in a really good situation. We have veteran drivers.
Yeah.
And the communication is great between us and the bus company.
Yeah.
I think Goldie wants to say something.
Yeah, yeah, I have a question. Sorry, can you hear me? Okay. So I know we are in a very good shape in terms of buses, especially with what you're hearing from other districts. I have a question about the route. Who plans on the route? Connolly themselves plan the route or we do it ourselves?
Connolly does the first draft and then where we know that we've had some feedback in previous years, we share that feedback and we make adjustments where, where we can. We're very happy to say this year that there is no elementary bus that starts before seven. By making one or two tweaks over in Sherburne, we were able to take one bus that was starting a little bit before seven and make them after seven. So we have been able to sort of maintain that goal of not having any elementary buses with a starting pickup any earlier than seven.
with a starting pickup any earlier than seven. And Dover, just because of the geographics, even have some that are much later than that.
Yeah, so I, I know it's, they're really becoming more efficient and great. Is there any way that now with new technology and all these Google Maps and improvement in traffic studies, can we use that technology to even make it more efficient?
So we actually have the technology that at least at transportation, we added that pre-COVID and we, we actually did prototype runs, but they were basically giving us where we were. And I think there's some nuances about some of our streets and some of our turnarounds that then dictate a little bit changes to that, so where we have to finesse it. So I, we're very fortunate that the main router at Conley who works, who's been assigned to us knows our streets forwards and backwards, but she's also very open. Like I said, we changed two buses in Sherburne this year with some suggestions from families that were, that it did allow us to, to change times. So I don't, I think that we do a pretty good job of that. And I think you can look at different routings and it could give you a little bit different scenario, but I don't think we have time savings in there necessarily to, to be made up. We also have to look at the riders, the number of riders on a bus that sometimes also impacts sort of routes. But I think that we take a fresh look every year. I will say a lot of, especially at the elementary level, because kindergarteners get that door-to-door service. That impacts the routes on an annual basis, depending on where those students are located. But a lot of work goes in all summer long to sort of perfect those and to make sure we have a safe route for bus drivers, that they have places they can turn around and, you know, could safely get down streets. We do more concierge service, I will say, in this town than we do in surrounding districts in that we don't have it at the elementary level. Their stops aren't that far apart. So I think that we maximize what we can.
That's great.
I was talking to our, our bus driver the other day and he was suggesting changes to the bus route and he was, wasn't quite sure how those changes were going to get taken.
Yeah, oh no, they usually are well-received because they're the ones who's, who are writing it too.
Who are doing it.
Yeah, and we had changes in Dover this year because Claybrook being closed. And that driver was instrumental in helping us figure out how we were going to get that to work when you couldn't use Claybrook.
Right.
To get out. So I think they are a valued input and communicate well with their dispatcher. Who does, who makes the impact. So it's a collaborative team process for sure. Yeah, exactly. So any other questions on the operating, just let Liz know, but then we'll take a few minutes to sort of segue into the out-of-district. So there is a chart in tab four that I think is helpful. It sort of breaks out the big number of, you know, 2.6 million and sort of shows you the age groups by elementary, middle school, high school, nine to 11. We separately break out 12th grade because theoretically in most cases, those would be the students that would age out for the following year. And then we do highlight for you that students that we are keeping 12 who are in fifth year, in the fifth year of sort of a high school schedule, but also that we then maintain until they turn 23. So once, or when they turn 22. And that may be most or morally our residential students who actually will never be able to sort of graduate and get a diploma. A school district is responsible for them until they turn 22. And then we also, there's different placements. You can have a mass public, as I said, where there are lots, some of the larger school districts, Wellesley, for instance, we used to send students to. They have in-district special education programs where they allow other districts to send students and that way they have a healthy cohort of students to participate. We have a collaborative. So if you hear us talk about accept, an accept collaborative is, actually also provides our special education transportation. And then we have the tech collaborative. So those are collaboratives that come together to serve the needs of districts and provide programming that they need. And they both provide special education programming. And so students can go to their locations. So that is a category. Then we have the non-public, which are obviously some of the more private schools. If you think about NECC, there's a landmark. So the schools that are specifically special education schools that are non-public in nature. And then we have some students because of where their needs are, are placed in out-of-state schools. So I think it's good to see those different categories, again, just to sort of wrap your head around the number. And then the number of students in each of those categories. So we are budgeting 22 placements and so that our fiscal year 24 placements that we have now, that we know are going to be continuing in 25. So if you look back at your monthly report, you'll see that we talked about that we have 24 placements. Well, of, of those 24, two are aging out or graduating. And so those are not continuing into 25. And your 24 budget obviously was with 18, which is why we're seeing the spike since we have 24. I think it's also helpful to sort of roll forward the budget one year to the next. Sometimes you'll see the number is the same, but what you're not seeing is the ins and outs. And so I think it's important just to see what's that, what's coming and what's going. So if we start with our 18 that we had budgeted, we had three that graduated or aged out and I sort of give you an estimate of what that is, the 190. We had one student who actually moved out of district. So they left us and so that, that's a savings there. We had eight new placements and that half a million dollars is sort of the, the composition of those. We are looking at a 5% with increase right now. So I put 5% in the budget. I didn't actually put 5% in your report because as some of these schools start making their announcements, I could refine that. So I hated to put a number. It's 5%, but I hate to put it in writing because it could change. And then changes in placement. So once a student goes out of district, they, they may or may not work, be working well in the district where they are and with the placement where they are. And so we have to seek another placement. With that sometimes comes an increase or change in prices. So we did have about $100,000 of that. So if you look at that, we've got an increase, if you look at the ins and outs between 24 and 25, it's a net increase of 500,000, which is approximately what you're seeing in your budget. But it gives you a little more insight as to how that's coming about and sort of what some of the drivers are for that. One thing that we don't have really good insight into right now is our transportation expense. We're still waiting for our first sort of monthly bill so that we know how many riders we have and what the mileage they're being assessed for their riders. I should definitely have that, we're expecting it actually this week. So I'll be able to refine those numbers both for your 24 actuals and also for your 25 budget. I do know that the rate approved for accept was a 4% increase. So I know what the increase is going to be, just don't have a good handle of what our base is going to be. So we will hopefully, hopefully it'll be in that $372,000 range. But that will be one number that we will definitely tweak in your version 2.0.
Just a small question. When you have a number of students in the categories here, what is, what is less than three? Like we started with three and somebody left?
No, we use, there's sort of a competitive, we don't want to single anyone out in those categories. So I just mean we have less than three. When you only have one category from less than three, you can actually back into it. But like last year, we had a couple of less than threes.
That's what I was kind of wondering why it didn't total end up in a point something or other.
That's anonymity to keep someone.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, yeah.
And then, sorry, the tuition collaborative is, is that the Dover Sherburne?
No, so that is going to accept or tech, or there's, there's also a couple others out there. Case, there's a lot of collaboratives. So a collaborative is considered like an extension of public school in that it is all public school districts that are members and together sort of created this organization. So accept, not only does our transportation, they also have special education programs that you can send students to that are intense learning disability type programs. They have a great transition program. So it's a way that school districts come together who don't have cohorts. Think about all these school districts. If we all have students, we have a cohort and the collaborative allows us to provide the services to those students. And so there are member rates and there's non-member rates. So when you go to the collaborators, if you were a member rate, you're getting a discount than if you're a non-member rate. So typically your least expensive cat, your least extensive placement is a mass public. The collaborative is usually like the next one because it's really just an extension of public. And then it gets more expensive if you do the non-public and obviously sometimes out-of-state is sort of equivalent to non-public. So where we can, we look at non-public, we look at public schools, we look at collaboratives because we're looking for the best match for the student, but also the best economical placement for the town.
And it's non-public private? Is that another way of saying?
Yes, yes, private, yeah.
And out-of-state is private too?
Exactly.
It's just out-of-state?
And these are the categories that we use when we report students, out-of-district students to the state as well. So this is what, sort of why we're reporting to you this way. This is actually also the way that we do our financial and our student reporting to DESI.
And there's, there is a coordinator that, not to, not to, it's just kind of a, to check the accuracy of the placement, not accuracy, the.
Yes, they attend.
Efficiency or the.
Yes, they do visits. So part of that person's responsibility is to go visit the student at the placements, be in constant correspondence with the student in the placement if there's issues. The IP still that we manage here still goes with the student to those schools and then that's still annually updated and evaluated. So it's, it's no different than, say, we have a student in district, the same sort of vision that we have and oversight that we have for here, we actually have for the, our students when they're placed out as well. And then out-of-district coordinator covers, you know, she's, that position covers all 3322 Dover and Sherburne. So they have a great breadth of, breadth of what, where the programs are, they learn about the programs, they visit schools that we might not have students at to learn about the programs. Yeah. So that are, those are the two pieces. Again, I think that your biggest cost driver is payroll on your operating side and then the ask that we're asking for math. I do think that we were very fiscally responsible in other categories where we could, we trimmed. Obviously the bus, the one issue with the bus too is the fuel surcharge. We have in, in our contract sort of a fuel clause that if we're within operating, I think it's, I meant to look, it's like from three, from 280 to 330, we don't pay. If you go below, you get a credit. If you go above, you get a fuel surcharge. Well, as you know what diesel prices have been, they just keep, they, they're not coming down, they're maintaining. So we do for every mile that we drive, we get a fuel surcharge for the difference between what's in the contract and what the, the market rate is on a, on a monthly basis.
What is that pegged off of?
It is like, it's a industry pricing, something that I, I know when I do the RFP because it's in there. But there is a, there is a index that they use. Yeah, oh, it is definitely regional specific, yeah, yeah. And normally you're operating within it, but it's.
Certainly the first couple of years of the contract.
Exactly. Well, the first couple, yeah, it was a point, we're actually getting credits, great. Yeah. So it can definitely fluctuate. Some districts use the fuel sur, you know, the fuel clause. I do think it protects you because if you don't have it in there, I think your contract cost is probably more expensive because they have to hedge it one way or another. So you're best off sharing in that risk. And so I think we've always sort of had that in our contract.
That's good.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
That's great.
Dawn, thank you. Can you just make it something very complicated, clear and easy to follow and go back and look at? And I appreciate how you walk us through year after year. So thank you.
Well, my pleasure. And like I said, as we get more information, that's why I bring your book every meeting because I'll bring new handouts. And again, anything that you see, because you're a vital part of this process as well, please, you know, let us know. But I do think that, you know, we, we meet weekly in central office and are always talking about, you know, what's going on in the schools and where we need to find funding. And I do think we're very resourceful and do bring forward to the towns, you know, good service at a really good price. And so I think you should pride yourself on and sort of be, you know, the community that oversees and make sure that, you know, we do do that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, our next.
No, but I do need you to vote.
Oh, we vote on that?
Yeah, you got to vote so that I can send version 1.0 to the town, 1.0 to the town.
So that's when taking a vote on?
Yep, just approve the budget as presented. So you'll vote tonight.
As a first round.
As a first round. The next time you'll vote is in March. So you vote twice.
To approve the budget as presented?
Yes.
Okay.
Because this will, as you read in that guidance, they want all first version budgets turned in by December 6th.
Got it. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the first version of the budget as presented?
Jeff Cassidy, so moved.
Is there a second?
Jesse, hold on a second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Does Goli have to like?
Yeah, she's roll call because she's remote.
Okay, I forget how that works. So I just say.
Yeah, just say their names, yeah.
Okay, Goli Sefor?
Yes. All in favor?
Yep. Jesse Hall?
Yes.
Liz Grossman, yes. So the motion carries by unanimous consent. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda, thanks again, Dawn. Our next agenda item is the consent item. So in our packets, we had the note, the minutes from our last meeting on October 24th as well as some of the grants. Dawn, can you explain the grants piece just a little?
So we started this last year, just to make school committee more aware, there's, there's a whole slew of entitlement grants that we are eligible for, that are competitive grants, where sort of then told us is the amount you're eligible for. We do apply for those. It was a very tedious process this year, I will say. They have a new grant system at DESI. But we wanted to just, again, as we highlighted in the budget, we wanted to have you sort of approve accept these grants on behalf of the committee. And so there's, and these have all been applied for and approved. So we've talked about the SPED 240 that we spent specifically on educational assistance for the SPED programming. We also get a small 262 grant for early education, which helps with some pre-K expenses. And then we have some title grants that are based on various things. In your budget book actually gives you more explanation as to what the grants are, but these are the amounts that we've been awarded for fiscal year 24.
Thank you. So I'm, well, first of all, does anyone have any changes they'd like to make to the minutes? I didn't notice anything. Goli, you're good? Okay. May I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Jesse Hall is so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Jeff Cassidy, second.
Any further discussion? Okay, so Goli Sefor?
Yes.
Jesse Hall?
Yes.
Jeff Cassidy?
Yes.
Liz Grossman, yes. The motion carries by unanimous consent. And our next, I lost my thing. The last, second to last agenda item is the informational items. So in our packets, we all got the triggering November newsletter from Dr. Reiman. We have the Sherburne School Committee Minutes as well as the Regional School Committee Minutes, just so we are all aware of what's going on in the other committees. And then finally, does anybody have any items they would like to bring forth to discuss at the January 16th meeting? And if you don't have any right now, can always email me and we can bring those forward. Anybody? Okay, well, that is all we have for tonight. Do we roll call through this? Okay. So we are going to do a roll call to adjourn. Goli?
Yes.
Jesse Hall?
Yes.
Jeff Cassidy? Liz Grossman, yes. Thanks, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.